Okay. Good evening, everyone. We are going to officially call to order. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that as an official call to order, Mr. Deputy Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Mayor Patterson, we do have quorum. In addition to yourself, we have in attendance Counselor Bohm, Counselor Chappell, Counselor Doherty, Counselor Hill, Counselor Hutchison, Counselor Kylie, Counselor McLaren, Counselor Neal, Counselor Oosterhoff, and Counselor Ossanik. And from staff in attendance, we have Lanny Hurdle, Chief Administrative Officer, Paige Agnew, Commissioner, Community Services, Neil Carbone, Commissioner, Corporate Services, Peter Huguenbos, Commissioner, Business, Environment, and Projects, Brad Joyce, Commissioner, Transportation and Public Works, John Bolignone, City Clerk, Lisa Capener-Hunt, Director of Building and Enforcement, Jenna Morley, Director, Legal Services and City Solicitor, Ruth Nordgraf, Director, Housing and Social Services, Tim Park, Director, Planning Services, Karen Santucci, Director, Public Works and Solid Waste, LaCrisha Turner, Director, Recreation and Leisure Services, Colin Wigginton, Director, Arts and Culture, Scarlett Isles, Manager, Financial Planning, Amy Gibson, Manager, Recreation Services, Alan MacLeod, Deputy City Solicitor, Julie Salterkeen, Manager, Climate Leadership, Heather Scrannidge, Manager, Housing and Homelessness. Our meeting host tonight is Elizabeth Fawcett, and our IS&amp;T support is Marcus Legasse. And other staff in attendance includes Soren Christensen, Project Manager, Climate Leadership.
Okay, thank you very much. We did not meet in committee the whole closed meeting tonight, so we'll move to the addits. There are two sets of addits with three delegations, an additional item of miscellaneous business, a motion of condolence, and a new motion. Can I have a mover and a seconder for those addits? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Ossanik. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, we have no presentations this evening, so we will move on to delegations. We have three delegations, and our first, Marilyn Cousins-Bram, Chief Executive Officer of Kingston and Frontenac Housing Corporation, will appear before council to speak to Clause 2, Report Number 45 from the CAO with respect to the Affordable Housing Development 1316 Princess Street. Just a reminder to all of our delegations that you have five minutes to speak, and then we will open up the floor to questions from members of council. Ms. Cousins-Bram, welcome, and you have the floor.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm here on behalf of Kingston-Frontenac Housing Corporation and the Board of Directors to ask City Council for a loan to advance the planned project on 1316 Princess Street. Firstly, I'd like to take a moment in which to reflect on what KFHC and the city of Kingston have accomplished working in partnership. Since 2011, we have actually built eight affordable housing projects, and last Friday, we finished 27 Wright Crescent and had our official opening. KFHC is currently participating in the Rapid Housing Initiative with the city, and we're building a small nine-affordable-units project on Curtis Crescent to house vulnerable youth, which will be in occupancy in October 2022. Increasing affordable housing is a key strategic priority for not only the city of Kingston, but for KFHC. Together, we certainly have developed affordable housing. As you know, KFHC is one of the biggest developers of affordable housing in the city, and we have taken full advantage of all funding opportunities and from all levels of government to advance affordable housing. KFHC works closely and very well with our service manager and the Housing Department to advance affordable housing in the city. 1316 Princess Street has been in development since 2019. As you are all aware, the last few years have greatly impacted the construction and development sector. For 27 Wright, the plans were in place, the interest rate was low, and the project was moving forward before the pandemic struck. The impact of the pandemic wasn't felt immediately, and unfortunately, some of the cost escalation was absorbed by our general contractor due to the hard tender process. I'm pleased to say that 27 Wright Crescent was finished on time and within budget. The issues for this project were related to shortage of supply, especially lumber, materials, and labor, and the continual lockdowns during the height of the pandemic. 1316 Princess Street is facing different challenges. It's a different time, and the impact of the pandemic has been well established. Despite having two cost estimates, the true cost of this project was determined through the tendering process. KFHC received three strong bids, with the lowest bid qualified being $6.2 million over the projected construction costs. Why the cost escalation? The political and economic environment is changing rapidly, and there is uncertainty. So during uncertainty, to mitigate risk, cost increases occur. Many projects that were on hold during the pandemic are back commencing, and new announcements of other projects are happening to kickstart the economy, all leading to greater competition for supplies, material, labor, and seeing greater shortages than previous. As we know, when supply and demand happens, there's an increase in costs. For 1316 Princess Street, it's a different interest rate, and inflation is high. Added to this has been the carbon tax, which has impacted fuel costs, which impacts every supply chain, every component of our development. And for KFHC, we are the end consumer, and so we have the accumulative effect. Where does this leave KFHC and 13 Princess Street? The options are, we could stop the project, maybe wait a few years to see if the costs reduce. There's no guarantee it's going to be cheaper. We do not know if CMHC funding would be available, and at the same time, we are dealing with a high demand for affordable housing.
Thirty seconds.
CMHC is willing to work with us, so what we need is for the city to come forward to provide KFHC with a low-interest rate of $3.1 million with a 50-year amortization schedule. I am committed to this project, and I know the city is, and I would like to move this forward, working together in partnership. Thank you in advance for considering KFHC's request.
That's great, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Hutchison?
Just one question. What is the interest rate on the loan?
For the interest rate for CMHC, at this time, that is confidential and not public, because we haven't met all of the criteria in order to complete the application and to have our term sheet, our mortgage loan.
So is it roughly in rhyme with what the city borrows?
I do not know that.
That might be a good question for staff when we get to that item.
No problem.
Are there any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Cousins-Bram, thank you very much. With that, we'll move to our next delegation. We'll invite Kathleen O'Hara to speak to council with respect to New Motion Number 1, regarding the woodlands within the urban boundary. Ms. O'Hara, welcome, and you have the floor.
Hi, my name is Kathleen O'Hara, 91 King Street East. I'm with No Clear Cuts in Kingston. We reformed last summer to prevent J. Patrick from clearcutting 1,800 trees on the former tannery site. Since then, we have created the Citizens' Tree Watch and identified more than 20 sites where trees have been cut down or are threatened. Kingston used to be well-forested before Dutch elm disease, the ice storm, and the Emerald Ash Bore. Now, one of the main threats is human-caused development. That is why I want to thank Lisa Ossanik and Simon Chappell for introducing their motion to map out what trees remain and try to save them. First slide, please. I hope this isn't counting on my time. First slide?
So ma'am, the slides are up, we can see them? We're not sure if you can.
Oh, well, I can't. How do I? Okay, I'll just have to hope for the best. Oh, I see, okay. I was on gallery, but couldn't see anything. First slide, okay. In March 2019, the city of Kingston declared a climate emergency. Next slide, please. Last month, Intact, the Intact Center on Climate Adaptation at the University of Waterloo, issued a dire warning. Next slide, please. They pointed out that extreme heat would probably be the biggest killer, climate killer in Canada. Next slide. They identified 15 urban areas most vulnerable to that heat increase. Kingston is one of them. Next slide, please. The report recommended trees as a way of mitigating the heat impact. I repeat, trees. Is there anyone here who hasn't enjoyed the cooling effect of trees? Next slide, please. But what is Kingston doing? Cutting down trees or allowing developers to cut them down? On Wright Crescent, ironically enough, residents were promised that some of their local trees would be protected. Not one was saved. Next slide, please. Residents on Unit Strive also saw their neighborhood trees come down. Next slide. This is what the corner of Princess and Sidney Road looked like. Next slide. Here it is now. Not a single tree on the property was saved. The remaining trees are on the other side of the property line. How will residents handle the extreme heat? The city often gets financial compensation for tree cuts, but will that help? Next slide, please. Here's the tree cut at 655 Graceland off Bath Road. Can the numbered company that did this build between the rocks and the railway tracks? Why was it done? Next slide. 2,200 trees were cut down on Clogs Road. Next slide, please. And more on Resource Road, with two other areas there threatened. And even more trees are threatened. Next slide, please. Again, J. Patrick wants to clearcut the former tannery site. This is an urban forest close to downtown. Imagine the desperately needed cooling effect it will have for many of us when temperatures rise. Next slide. And of course, this 220-year-old grandmother oak, white oak, is threatened. Next slide, please. Also, the many trees at 1177 Montreal Street. Next slide. And trees at 4085 Bath Road. These are smaller near the road, but 550 trees above six inches in diameter are threatened. It doesn't have to be this way, especially when we're facing a climate disaster. We can have homes and trees. Next slide, please. Some cities and developers are doing their best to build around trees, adding to both mental and physical health. Next slide, please. Why don't we develop, intensify, build where there are no trees? No Clear Cuts has identified six potential unwooded building sites along Montreal and Division. Some of them are owned by the city. I want to conclude by begging City Council to support this motion. We were the first community in Ontario to declare a climate emergency. Let's be as wise and proactive as we were three years ago and save our remaining trees. They will probably save lives in the not-too-distant future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to our third and final delegation. We will invite Joyce Hostin to appear before council and to speak to New Motion Number 1, respect to woodlands within the urban boundary. Ms. Hostin, welcome. And you have the floor.
Thank you. I don't know my slides up. I don't see them. Okay. It's really hard to see this slide, sorry. Okay, so... Okay, thank you. So we're in a climate emergency. I'm here to speak to the motion, and thank you very much for Lisa Ossanik and Simon Chappell for bringing this for an emotion. What's missing from the motion is what Kathleen just spoke about. Next slide. So the report she mentioned, we'll move on. Next slide. One of the things with the woodlands, and why woodlands are so important, is that they have a space that they radiate out to, so up to 16 meters or more, depending on the density of the woodland. And this is why woodlands are so important. Next slide. And this is another one that shows, this is a study that was done in China, but it's really a research study, so it's applicable anywhere where the diversity, the biodiversity of the woodland itself has a significant impact on the cooling effect as well. So diversity of woodland, not just like trees and rows, has an important mitigation effect in heat islands. Next slide. And it's really difficult, sorry, with this way of showing the slides, that I can't actually see my own slides on the screen. So I can't read that box. But really, this one is from China. And what, but really, this one is from China. And what they're talking about here is, you can see that there's diversity of cover in there. And while this isn't a woodlot, the different layers also have a significant impact on the heat island effect. Next slide. And this is a World Health Organization report. And what it's talking about is the importance of planning. And I mentioned in there the GHG report that's also in council tonight, where it talks about the intensification versus canopy. And I think we have to stop saying either/or, because GHG is really not the primary benefit of trees. It's the canopy and the health to humans. Next slide, while humans to all the residents, not just human residents. And we talk about like the benefits of big trees, but little trees are also really important. Some of those woodland trees, while they may be five to 10 years old, they're on the way to be elder trees. And also, the trees in woodlands last and live a lot longer than trees along streets. Next slide. Trying to see this one too in the gallery view. I'm going to have to change my tactics next time. In this one, oh, they're giving prescriptions now in B.C. because of the benefits to health of nature. The prescriptions are for national parks. Next slide. National parks aren't close to us. We need these within our urban boundary. We need these within walking distance. 300 meters is the recommended distance by World Health Organization, by the WHO is recommending 300 meters, which is why the 330-300 rule. And this was a thing done in Toronto, and within it, you can see, they did a GIS survey where you can see how many are outside of, in this case, the 200-meter boundary, which is where they were looking at in Toronto. Next slide. So you can look at it from a regional view, and this was a watershed where they're looking at the regional. How do, we don't just look at the woodland, and right now, we're looking at the city one at a time. Then we need to start taking a more strategic look. So regionally, next slide. City of Edmonton isn't just looking regionally, they're looking at regionally, municipally, and then at the neighborhood level. And so they're conserving as part of this, so they're conserving and they're planting. As little forests were planting, but we can't, the little trees that we plant don't make up for the trees that we lose. Next slide. City of Edmonton, and they have this policy, they're calling the Breathe Policy, and they're planning around it, and so Edmonton is doing some really innovative ways of taking a holistic look at not just a woodlot, but how a woodlot integrates into the overall city planning and into ecological corners as well. Next slide.
Thirty seconds.
And next slide, this is also Edmonton. Brampton, or was that Brampton? That might have been Brampton. Brampton is really interesting as well, because they're doing eco-parks. And these eco-corners are, they have the woodlots, which connect into corners, which over time turns Brampton into a park. Last slide. And so I would say, keep going to the end. Let's think about, like, let's think as good ancestors and do our planning, and think 330-300, and these woodlots into a larger strategy.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sorry for that.
That's okay. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Kylie?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you, thank you, Ms. Hostin. I always find your slide shows that we could see, just so you know, we could see them. They're very striking, and it's helpful to see the images. I want to ask you about the one slide that had a picture from China. Do you know if the trees in that were planted before or after? Because I take the point about needing to keep trees in sight, but do they need to be planted before or after the development? Do you know about that?
In that particular thing, I know what China's doing right now is when they're, China is really putting a lot of work into this, because they have a lot of ecological problems. And so they are taking down, my daughter actually travels there all the time, so she knows China very well, and she says, why aren't we doing what they're doing? Where they're taking down streets, and they're ripping up and putting these divisions between where the bicyclists and pedestrians go, and then they're planting in those corners.
Okay, thank you. And second question, the comment, I believe I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that we need to stop focusing only on GHGs, because there are so many other benefits of trees that you've, I think, well-laid out. Could you speak to how you see urban, so within the city, urban woodlots in terms of sequestration and the pros and cons of that from your view?
I actually think we should, I think when it comes to trees, we need to stop focusing on sequestration in general. Like, they have GHG benefits. The soil, if we really treat the soil differently that they're planting in, also has significant GHG benefits. But really, it, the trees, it's not about GHG. It's about the livability of our cities for all of, for the residents, and also for, well, for the human and the non-human residents. And, you know, thinking about our active corners, and are people going to use them if there's no trees along them? And we want people to do that, but they won't do that if there's no shade. And so we have to really think about trees and all the health benefits. And there's another one, I think it was mentioned, well, I don't know, I guess I don't want to talk too much. But I think we need to think beyond GHG and stop kind of pinning density versus trees with GHG and say, how do we have density? How do we bring trees in there so we have this really livable, walkable city where we're driving less, people aren't taking active transport because they have the cooling impact of trees, they're walking, they're kind of sitting under trees in shade, and the trees are cooling the buildings? I don't know if that answers the question.
That's helpful for me, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ossanik.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thanks very much for the delegation, Ms. Hostin. In your presentation, I think you mentioned the city of Brampton. That was the one example you used for eco-parks. Are there any other cities that you feel, that you see are doing it correctly?
Well, yeah, Brampton is really interesting. Edmonton, I think, they have multiple policies that they are now putting around this. They have the Breathe one, they have another one about the natural areas, and both protecting the natural areas, and and also, in addition to protecting, in a new neighborhood, how do they, well, protect when they design the neighborhood, not doing it as an afterthought, raise it and then add back in, but protecting and then also adding in, we're missing to get that, that protection. Rentier, I think, was in there, but because I couldn't really see my slides very well, or they were kind of behind. They are actually now, they've put in a measure, and it's really hard to find the information about Rentier, but they put in a measure about the amount that they're protecting. So that's one of the metrics that they're following. And right now, we don't have metrics like that, we're not tracking it. Vancouver, while their strategy is centered around rain and becoming a sponge city, a lot of that is also linked to the canopy, so those integrate together. So Vancouver is doing some really interesting work around that as well. I think those are the one, and Toronto with its green, they just released, I think they're called Green Codes or Green Building, and these are for all new developments coming in through Toronto, where they have this ranked criteria. And they're requiring protection, they're requiring actually native plants to be planted in new developments. Right now, we don't, we still actually require a lot of, I think turf grass is still in our development policy. In Toronto, they're actually requiring protection, and they're requiring native species being planted, native trees being planted.
Thank you.
Counselor Stroth?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hostin. I really think a lot about what you said about the cooling effect of trees. We all know in the summertime, if you go into forest, how cool, how much you just notice immediately that the temperature is several degrees cooler in the, it's not just in the shade, but the, there seems to be like an ice cube effect that trees have. So I would say, like, do we have any areas like that in the city? Obviously, you'd say woodlots, but could you speak to the actual cooling effect of trees, and specifically, how that would impact individual homeowners who may be worried about their hydro bills?
Yeah, one of the things I think we should be doing, like, in new developments and with homeowners, since we are going to be mapping out in King's Court, actually, in June, like, Kingston Secondary students are going to be walking through the neighborhood and doing some front yard mapping of canopy there as part of, like, how do we get canopy in that neighborhood? And that's with Public Works that are doing that. And so one of the things that we could be looking at with homeowners and with businesses and with sustainable Kingston is, are we, do we have trees at the right areas of the, either the house or the the buildings where it's shading so that it's cooling in the critical parts of the day? And in, actually, Vancouver's rain strategy, they had residents, they had working sessions with residents where they kind of visioned what low, like, a single-family house, those low rises and high rises, and how you could grain around them to provide, not just capturing the rain, but also the cooling. So, and I think I'm getting distracted from your question, but really, yeah, where do we plant trees around buildings to maximize shade so that even when it's really hot, the air conditioning use is much lower? Does that answer it? Did I miss something?
Yes, and maybe I'll ask you a follow-up then, just on this same subject. So for a homeowner, okay, so we have the Neighborhood Tree Planting Program where you can get subsidized trees and plant them on your property, but you're saying that homeowners should also maybe consult, and maybe the city should have a service of the location of those plantings if they're going to take advantage of those trees? Those trees are already fairly big when they're planted. And, and I guess, as an extension, do you think the Neighborhood Tree Planting Program is sufficient in this regard to add a lot of that shading effect directly on the homes that use air conditioning to reduce that energy use?
Well, I think we're going to need a lot more trees than the Tree Planting Program can provide. And also, right now, in the Tree Planting Program, we're planting individual trees, but as you saw, it's like, there's also the density and the layers. And the Tree Planting Program, because canopy is the target, is about trees. And ideally, even with homeowners in individual or in apartment buildings, we have multi- with homeowners in individual or in apartment buildings, we have multi-layers, including ground, like tree, understory tree and shrubs, and those all build up to provide that cooling effect. And so we need, I, I think, like, help around, here's the ideal where areas on to, so there's the, well, there's cooling the streets so people can walk down the streets, and then there's shading the houses. And those are two different goals. They're both important, and they require sort of a different consult with the homeowners or with the building dwellers. Maybe that's a way to answer it. So yes, a service that is beneficial to say southwest and west, and, you know, this is the distance from the house as it grows that will maximize the shade.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Counselor Hill.
Thank you, Worship, and I, I thank you for the presentation. I just tried to kind of get a sense of, of are all woodlots created equal? And I guess my, my question is, I'm looking at, for example, the tannery lands. So right now, I'm on the planning committee. Right now, we get just about every development that we approve or comes before us, the, the folks that oppose it, oppose, at least one of the grounds that they oppose it on is, is the fact that there's going to have to be some clear cutting of the trees on that property. So looking at the tannery as an example, you know, there's no one who lives there, so it's not really providing shading or cooling for anyone. It's not accessible land there, you know, in its current state. The trees largely are sort of smaller, non-native species. So, you know, you look at that woodlot versus, say, you know, another one in, in the city that has more potential impact. Like, could, could you see your way to supporting stratifying sort of what woodlots are most important for, you know, recognizing that maybe some development has to take place? And I absolutely agree with you that where we can incorporate trees into that development, we should be doing that. But, you know, i- i- in the event that we can't protect all of our woodlots, because we do have to provide for some development, saying, okay, this woodlot here, the tannery example would be one, is not the most critical woodlot to achieving the goals that your group and others that have a similar opinion to you want to see done. We can lose that woodlot, but we really want to not just stress the protection of this woodlot, but enhance it. Is, can you sort of comment on that? Sorry, Your Worship.
Yeah, I think, like, as staff looks through, and hopefully this motion passes, and as staff looks through the strategies around that, coming up with a list of criteria, and that one from Toronto, and that Toronto one, one, the one Toronto one that I had in the slide deck, that was from a People's Group, so it wasn't the city. But they had a list of criteria about value to people, value to the ecology, which by then they would also include wildlife and other things, and including like the natural areas that they're close to. So if you look at it from a regal and the water, all of those would rank into the value. And I agree, we can't save every tree, we can't save every woodlot. But what happens right now, and I met with a few landscape architects that work closely with developers, and, you know, you, you talk to any of the landscape architects, and they'll be frustrated because they get called in at the end, after, you know, the development, the lots cleared, and they come in and they're to add things back. Whereas if we start thinking more holistically, strategically, that we want to say aim for three thirty, three hundred as a goal, then when we're looking at a potential location, how do we evaluate it against the regional implications from a watershed and the connectivity from the value to people, from the densification and the value to like the walkability and meeting our intensification goals, and, and look at all of those as a set of criteria? So I think coming up with that criteria is really important. And so I'm not going to make, you know, and, you know, the tannery, I'm, I, I'm not sure I want to comment on that one because I really don't know it that well. I've not studied the canopy and stuff. But one of the things with a woodlot, the size of the woodlot, it does have a significant impact, like fairly, just the larger the woodlot, the greater the distance, the cooling effect. And then, so that, I think, should be factored in, into, like, that would, might be one of the criteria to look at, the use of it afterwards. So then, I don't have an answer other than it's a, I think it should be, you know, staff coming, looking at, here's a set of criteria that we holistically analyze against, and not just do it like one-off, but the regional, municipal and neighborhood level, and how do we make sure that we both have the intensification and reach our, I would argue, for three thirty, three hundred goal, but.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. I appreciate your response.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you very much, Ms. Hostin. And with that, we will move on in our agenda. We have no further delegations. We have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Okay, seeing now we do have one motion of condolence, a move by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the families, friends and all members of the RMC community for the tragic loss of four cadets on Friday, April 29th, 2022. Jack Hogarth, Andre Honchu, Broden Murphy and Andreas Salek will be dearly missed by all who knew them. Our thoughts are with their loved ones during this very difficult time. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, we have no deferred motions, so we will move on to reports. First is report number forty-four from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor Ossanik, that report number forty-four from the chief administrative officer consent be received and adopted.
So there are three clauses. Would anyone like any of those clauses separated? Okay, seeing then, then we'll vote on everything as a whole. So clause one, election compliance audit committee, 2022 to 2026. Clause two, special occasion permit requests. And clause three, renewal of the service level agreement between the city of Kingston and the Kingston Theater Alliance. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, on to report number forty-five from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Counselor Hutchison, that report number forty-five from the chief administrative officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, so clause one, Kingston area taxi commission service level agreement for transportation network companies licensing and enforcement. Okay, if there's no discussion, we will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Number two, affordable housing development, thirteen sixteen Princess Street. A discussion? Counselor Hutchison?
I just wanted to see if there was a different answer, since there was no answer. The, on the interest rate on that loan, I'm not, I take it it's from the city and it will be related to what the city usually borrows money. Is that correct?
CAO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, what's in front of council tonight in terms of the city portion of a loan would be at one percent, and it would be basically at cost. We don't have the information for CMHC.
Right, I think there's something in the report about the rate from CMHC, but that's based on central bank rates, so it's not the same as for us, unfortunately, always. So anyway, I want to encourage staff, I want to encourage council to vote for this because the interest rate will still be pretty low, and we're going to get all the money back. It's a loan, right? And so we can do exactly what developers do, borrow the money and pay yourself back. So I don't see any problem with that strategy. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Chappell.
Thank you, Your Worship. As a member of the committee that works with the Kingston Housing Authority, they have done a lot of due diligence on this proposal. And it's unfortunate that the costs have soared to such an extent, but they're so close to making this happen. And I would just like to encourage council to support this. It's, it's a bit outside my character to be suggesting that we loan the money, but the merits of this proposal certainly outweigh that concern from this perspective. I mean, this was a council priority, and I, I think it's something that we should be supporting going forward.
Thank you, Counsel Osterhoff.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson. And I would just echo the words of my colleagues here, and I'm confident that we will support this, but certainly as a member of the committee with Kingston Product Housing Corporation, it's been a, a, a really interesting journey since 2019. Most of our term has been watching this project move forward, and I've been really impressed with everybody's support and involvement, and, and many, many things are really lining up really well. And, and we're, I'm really pleased by that, and I just, I've been impressed with the work of everybody to make this happen. And I look forward to our, our support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kylie?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And through you, my vote is for this, definitely. But I wanted to confirm with staff if the eighty percent reduction, or not reduction, sorry, the twenty percent reduction for eighty percent market rent is as of approval? So is it of this year if we go forward with the project, or is it when the building is built?
Ms. Tortograff?
Thank you. Sorry, just looking for my, unmuted here. So thank you for that question and to you, to you, Mayor Patterson. So the, the average market rent will be based on the, kind of the timeline of occupancy. We are anticipating that obviously should council approve this tonight, that the process will move really quickly. All the kind of permits and zoning is already in place. So we will be looking at a 2023 date, which means that we would be looking at the 2022 average market rents, which is annually provided by, by CMHC. I will say that, kind of looking at our average market rents, that they are, because they do not continue to go up annually once units are occupied, that they typically stay quite lower and even get below the eighty, sixty or eighty percent, depending on their, their start dates.
Thank you for that. And I'm glad to hear that it's quite a tight timeline, because, to be frank, I'm being a bit cynical, thinking that if it took a few years to build such that the rents were higher at the time of occupancy, it would essentially be equivalent to paying full rent today. But it's neat to think that this could get turned around and kind of stay at, at a lower or relatively lower level. Thanks.
Next is Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I agree with the previous speakers about the importance of this. I, I'd just like council to acknowledge, I guess, you know, what role we play on, on this file. So this is, this is a publicly, this is a public file, it's a public project. So typically, units like this get built by private developers, and welcome to their world. When there's cost overruns, they borrow money. And they're okay with, with that, and they usually almost always succeed because they can make the money back when, once they're occupied and collecting rent. I mean, that's the business model. It's the same with any business, right? You borrow to, to create, and then you recoup those losses, pay them off, and then you start raking in the profits. So if we do this here, if, if we approve the loan, it needs to be paid back. When it's paid back, it's proof that the model is profitable, or at least is financially sustainable. This is an important point because we can't stop with this one project, right? We need more projects like this. Counselor Hutchison's been talking about this since he came on council in 2006. We need to do more of this, and the only way that's going to happen is if we don't lose money on it, right? So this is a question of whether, that's like every developer would have to, have to decide if the risk is worth it. Do we think we're going to get the money back? And I think the answer is yes. And I, and I really think we need to know the economics of that, having done it, you know, having had a seat at the table when it's happening. Because we don't really get to see the books of the developers, and, and we don't get to know the level of risk that they're assuming. That's all internal to them. They don't divulge that, for good reason, because of competition. But we need to know what those decisions are like and what the ramifications of them are. So this is one of them tonight. I'm, I'm hoping that we, we all go for it, but also that when the reports start coming back about how this development is doing, that'll inform future decisions so that we can build a lot more of these affordable units, because we know we need thousands more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. Yes, I definitely support this, but I have a few quick questions. Where are we getting the three point one million from?
Thank you, and through, Mr. Mayor. So I don't have the exact detail, but I believe it will be probably funding that we'll be able to use through our municipal capital reserve.
The capital reserves. And where are they right now?
Sorry, Counsel McLaren, do you want to know what the balance is in that reserve?
No, as in, are we, are they in an interest-bearing account? Where are our capital reserves?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have the exact balance right now of our municipal capital reserve fund, but that's something we can provide to city council.
Can we at least say that one percent might be higher than what we're getting at wherever they might be, or is it going to be less?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. I would not have that information currently, but I can do a follow-up with members of council with those details.
No worries. So I'm very much supportive of this. I'm hoping that we're not going to lose any money on this as a result of getting a lower interest rate, but even if we are, I still think it's worth it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There's nobody else that wishes to speak. We will call the vote on clause two. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, moving on to report forty-six from Heritage Kingston.
Moved by Counselor Doherty, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff, that report number forty-six from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
So there are several clauses in the report. Would anyone like any of it separated? If not, we'll vote on report number forty-six as a whole. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Report number forty-seven from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Stroud, that report number seven, forty-seven, from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So there's just the one clause, Williamsville Corridor, meaningful green spaces, community garden. Counselor Neal?
Thank you very much. And I just want to point out that this motion passed unanimously at EITP. We had a really good delegation from the people who initiated this, and it was a community organization that did. Members, students from the public, or from health sciences who live in the community, spoke to some community activists, and came up with a really good initiative. And so I'm hopeful that this will recognize their hard work, and again, as in EITP, hopefully it will pass unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call the vote on clause one. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Report number forty-eight from the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Committee.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Doherty, that report number forty-eight from the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
So there is just the one clause, Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Committee 2021 report card. All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, we have nothing from committee of the whole. Information reports. If you have any questions, just raise your hand as I read through them. Number one, 2019 corporate greenhouse gas emission inventory. Counselor Doherty?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to commend staff on looking at the budget, the overall budget that we've committed to action on climate change of ninety-two point eight million, that we've received grants for over four point two, four point, forty-five million, actually, with the potential of perhaps more grants coming our way. A lot of action has taken place on, on, on our effort to be leaders in Ontario.
A lot of action has taken place on, on, on our effort to be leaders in Ontario on climate change. So, I just wonder if staff could actually speak to that point. How are we actually comparing to other cities and municipalities around Ontario?
Ms. Saltarkeen.
Yes, thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. We actually are in contact with our colleagues in other municipalities on a regular basis, and certainly through, for a number of our programs that we have recently launched, the Better Homes Kingston and the Green Standard Community Improvement Plan. We are having a lot of dialogue with these municipalities, they see how successful, for one, the Better Homes Kingston program has been, and they want to learn from us as they develop their programs as we move forward throughout the coming year.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor, could you just tell us a little bit more about the Better Homes Kingston project? It's quite new, and I just wonder if you could share a little bit about the experience so far?
Certainly, I can do that, and thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. The Better Homes Kingston program launched on April eleventh. It's a home energy retrofit program for existing homes primarily built prior to nineteen ninety-one. As of today, we have already received one hundred and eighty-five applications. The program is to retrofit, we offer LIC loans, forty thousand dollars, or ten percent of the current market value, whatever is lesser of the whole, up to a twenty-year loan at zero percent interest. And then we have targets as well, which is very beneficial. Not many municipalities are doing this, where they, if you decrease your greenhouse gas emissions or your energy consumption by twenty percent, you receive an incentive. If it's twenty-five, you receive additional three thousand, and if you reduce your greenhouse gas emissions and you retrofit greater than thirty thou, thirty percent, you receive an incentive of five thousand dollars. So, the program is becoming very successful, and myself and Soren Christiansen, the program manager, are working to approve the applications as quickly as we can. And another benefit of the program is the Energy Coach that we have retained to assist the homeowners throughout the process, to understand what would be best for the retrofit, and to assist them in, you know, identifying the contractors you use, et cetera. So, it's been a very successful launch and a very successful program.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions, oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Chappell, yes.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. My question with regards to the greenhouse gas emission inventory from the corporate perspective is the fact that although we're falling short, there is a requirement here to purchase greenhouse gas credits, and I'm just wondering, that money goes outside of the city of Kingston, it's paid for by Kingston taxpayers. If we're to have such an incentive or penalty for not meeting those emission targets, could there not be something better spent locally within the city of Kingston to benefit Kingston residents?
Ms. Saltarkeen.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So, the council direction in the strategic plan is that we purchase certified gold standard carbon offsets, and so that is how we are proceeding at this time, but certainly we could look at, in the future, a different way of addressing those offsets and, and the purchase of those.
Okay, thank you. Next is Councillor Neil.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank Ms. Saltarkeen and her staff for doing a great job on, particularly on the home retro program. Couple of quick comments, there, I, I have purchased carbon offsets to kind of clear my conscience when I fly, and, and the reality is, there are some really good carbon offsets. The Suzuki Foundation has done a very thorough job of, of engaging in and kind of giving a checklist of the best carbon offset companies, and there's a company in, a Canadian company that-
This is a question, Councillor?
Yes, it is, that does their offsets, particularly in Canada. I'm wondering which carbon offsets will we be looking for? Will we be able to use the Suzuki checklist, if you will?
Commissioner Hugaboss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councillor Neil. So, yeah, staff are happy to look at that. I think when going back to 2019 and talking to council and studying these priorities, it was, we thought collectively, staff and council, that it was important if we were going to offset as we go, reducing our emissions, that we seek out the gold standard to make sure that any money invested in carbon offsets definitely was, was, was going to achieve that target offset, and that's where the gold standard comes in. We're happy to take a look at, at the Suzuki Foundation, and Councillor Neil is happy to follow up with you. We, we do want to just make sure that the money invested in is, is certified, that it is going to achieve the, the net reduction of GHG that we're targeting for, for the 2019 year, and then the years beyond that as well. So, things may have changed in how they're named or how they're certified, and staff's open to that. We definitely just want to make sure that we, we achieve what we set out to back when, when council and staff were setting out those, those goals.
Thank you very much, and just a quick follow-up. From the corporate side, I know that we established somewhat of an ambitious target, that by 2025, our replacement fleet vehicles, when possible, would be hybrid or EV. Are we on track for meeting those, those ambitious goals?
Ms. Saltarkeen.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, working with our Asset Management Director and Transit and Public Works, there was some delay with the pandemic, but through the development of the Climate Leadership Plan and the targets, we are back on target to, to address those and bring those on to production and to in use in the next number of years.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll continue on. Information report number two, 2019 Community Greenhouse Gas Emission Inventory. Councillor Carly?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and you, through you, I wanted to clarify that the, the reduction that we did see, though admittedly was small, is including the population growth that happened in the community at this time. So, in other words, did we go down in GHGs as our population went up?
Ms. Saltarkeen.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. With me this evening is Nathan Mannion, he is a consultant from Greensdale Inc. that prepared our inventory reports, and I would like to have him address that question, and if I can add on at the end if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the greenhouse gas went down even though population went up, and there wasn't a lot of data necessarily to discern what those differences were, but that was the trend yet.
Excellent, thank you. I mean, again, to be honest, it is a small tick down, but the fact that it would be larger if we kept the population the same, I think is a testament to the good work that's being done with, as Councillor Doherty said, many of the substantial programs only recently coming online, so I look forward to seeing those future numbers. I also wanted to ask about the highest source from our community being gasoline from, is that individual cars? Like, personal vehicles? Is that correct?
The data that was taken is from all gasoline sales in the area. There's, there's not really a lot of data information out there about what types of vehicles are using those. It's sort of a large overall approach, so it's, we don't really have that information to, to know what, what types of vehicles are using it.
Is there any way to disaggregate that in the future? Because I think that would be helpful in thinking about densification and densification, getting those numbers about what the impact of development, particularly at different areas in the city, could, could have in terms of dropping that number. Is that a possibility?
We can look at, there's lots of ways that you can look into enhancing information. I think with all these reports, you know, you're, you're sort of hitting the nail on the head. You're trying to find, you know, what are the gaps, and how can we improve our reporting in the future? And so, that's, that's sort of what we're trying to aim with these reports and for the next, the next two years. You know, that's sort of also the challenge with most of these reports, is you don't have a lot of information. We haven't been collecting them to, to make these reports for a very long time. So, you know, we can look at what, what's out there, but I think what, what's, what's most important is to, to sort of look at those overall trends.
No, I take that point. Thank you, and I don't mean to criticize the report. I was actually very pleased with it and think that there's a lot of information already, but maybe just further refining it is something that can be explored, so thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions on that report? Okay, we'll continue on. Number three, Quarterly Report Tourism Kingston Q1 2022. Number four, Population, Housing and Employment Update. Okay, we have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, we have two motions. First moved by Councillor Bohm, seconded by, would someone else offer to second this? Seconded by Councillor Stroud, that notwithstanding section 3.1.4, subsection four, First Capital Place Illumination Policy, council approved the application submitted by Justin Chenier for the illumination of City Hall and Springer Market Square on May eleventh, 2022, to recognize Lyme Disease Awareness Month. And then, number two, moved by Councillor Bohm, seconded by Councillor Ossanik, that is requested by Jamie Oomen, St. Lawrence Parks Commission. Council designate the YGK Craft Beer Fest 2022, taking place Saturday, June eleventh, 2022, from eleven thirty a.m. to eight p.m. at Fort Henry National Historic Site, as an event of municipal significance to which special occasion permits may be issued by the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario. I'm, I'm sorry, Councillor Bohm.
Sorry, Your Worship, I was just wondering if I could speak to miscellaneous business item one briefly.
To number one, yeah, yeah, for sure.
Thank you. So, I was just wondering if staff could potentially consider including this in an annual format, and just annualizing lighting up City Hall for Lyme Disease Awareness Month. This is something where Kingston has some of the highest prevalence of Lyme disease within our region, and raising awareness about it is something that's near and dear to me, and I know even just going out in the woods now, you know, you'd usually check your kids for ticks. It's getting so bad now in Kingston that even in urban areas, if your kids go out in their backyard, you should check them for ticks every night. So, this is a disease that's treatable, if found early, but it is something we're going to have to continue to raise awareness. So, I would just ask, ask staff if they could consider maybe annualizing this light-up day every year. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you for that question. Yes, we will annualize that particular item.
Okay, we will call the vote then on miscellaneous business motions one and two. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Okay, on to new motions. Number one, moved by Councillor Ossanik, seconded by Councillor Chappell. Whereas the city of Kingston has had numerous woodlands cut down south of the 401 over the last year for development, with more woodlands to come up for development in the next short while. Whereas residents have expressed growing concern to their councillors about the clear cuts and the loss of biodiversity and wildlife habitat that the woodlands had contained. Therefore be resolved, the council directs staff to, number one, map out the existing woodlands within the urban boundary, identifying which woodlands are owned by the city and which are held in private ownership. Number two, provide strategies for council's consideration to protect Kingston's remaining woodlands within the urban boundary. Councillor Ossanik, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I wrote this motion because we've had an unprecedented number of woodlands that have come up for development and that have been cut down over the last year compared to other years. Just off the top of my head, like twenty woodlands. We've either approved a planning committee to be cut down because the environmental impact statement has allowed it, or are coming up for development, you know, and, and when you see the clear-cut lands, like we saw in the delegations, there was pictures of some, it's just devastating. And there's got to be a way that we can try to save the last woodlands we have south of the 401 in the urban boundary. So, that's what this motion is about, it's mapping out what woodlands we have left, and unfortunately, a lot of the woodlands are owned, like privately, which means they could be, you know, developed and torn down, but there's got to be some strategies out there that we can try to use as a municipality to save some of the trees, maybe giving more height, you know, try to get it more medium density, high density, give more height in order to save a good swath of lands along a creek. Like, if five hundred and fifty trees have to be cut down, only a hundred and thirty trees replanted at four zero eight five Bath Road, you know, can we give more height? And so that we can try to, you know, bring that number down of the trees cut down to, you know, half of that. That's what it's about. When the woodlands are cut down, even if the trees are, some trees are replanted, you know, maybe twenty percent replanted, you're not getting a woodland back, so you're not getting the biodiversity back. You're not getting, you know, the wildlife habitat back with just a few trees planted on front lawns and along the sidewalks. It is just not the same thing, and we do have a climate emergency right across the world. We need housing, we saw that we have a seven percent growth in our population since the last census. It's just that housing has to go in the right spots. We have to, you know, do the infill housing, and we have done lots of housing permits, lots of new housing, underutilized areas, like we know that development application is coming forward of the parking lot areas of the Frannenac Mall, and that's like bravo, hooray, like that's a really good use of space, but tearing down a forest, not so good, not, you know, like leaving just a tiny little edge of remnant forest or none at all, like we saw at two two seven four in the pictures tonight, and we know at Planning Committee, you know, that is not a good use. So, this is wide open to staff. What strategies are there that other cities are doing that can try to help us? So, next time a woodland comes to Planning Committee for development, we have, you know, some strategies to try to save as much of that woodland as possible, still putting housing next to it. That's what the motion is about. Thank you, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Next on my list is Councillor Neil.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the mover and the seconder. This is an excellent motion and a necessary motion. The problem for, and those of us that are on Planning Committee know that often a, a developer will come to us with a plan, but because he or she has had property rights, often they come to us with a plan, having already begun the process of cutting down trees. And all too often, it ends up with clearcutting on a lot. And I think this at least will give the city an inventory of wood, woodlands, both in our property and on private property, and would allow our, our planning personnel to notify the district councillor, or notify people that a development is in the works for this, and it would give us an opportunity to try and avoid that clear cut that often happens, and then the plan comes to council, it comes to Planning Committee. So, so I really applaud this, and now we have to make use of it, once we have that, that glossary of, of woodlands. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councillor Bohm.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, I like the idea of kind of understanding what we have in the city and what we can control and can't control. Obviously, what's on city-owned lands, we can, and what's held in private ownership, we have a much more difficult time of controlling. Councillor Ossanik mentioned, you know, something that we should try to do is build taller, and, I mean, we have tried that, it also has its own complications, so I, I've always usually been supportive of building higher and trying to get that density there. I guess my concern with this would be, it is so wide open, I'm not exactly cognizant, and I'm not sure if anybody else knows, what are the true costs of it? So, I'll ask, I believe, Commissioner Joyce, do we have the staff in-house capacity to actually be able to handle this? And if not, what would be the cost to contract something like this out?
Commissioner Joyce?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So, we would not have staff capacity to undertake this at this time. We, there's aspects, certainly the strategy portion of this motion could be done by staff in investigating what other municipalities are doing, that kind of research can, can occur. The mapping out section would take a fair amount of resources, I think. We'd have to look at it. If we contract this out- have to look at it. If we contract this out, that portion out, I think it would be, I'd be guessing quite honestly at this point, but you're certainly over $100,000, I think, based on the inventory that we do on the public landscape of our trees. And that's really, really rough, I'd have to say. I think it's something we would have to look into.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Joyce, for that answer. So, I mean, looking at that, I guess my concern with this is with the first part is, we're mapping it all out, but we don't even really understand what strategies. I would easily support number two, because we're looking at strategies and kind of considering. It's the mapping it out for me, which I kind of struggle with, because even once we have that, that information is good information, but it's gonna age relatively quickly. And developments are gonna happen. There's lots of things in the works. So, we're gonna pay potentially $100 to maybe $200,000 for that. And it's only gonna be good for a limited amount of time. So, with that cost, I would, I would almost think we'd want to look at the city-owned lands, which we can control, and attempt to densify the tree canopy and the forests in those areas. Because I'm a big proponent of this, my wife being a psychotherapist, forest therapy and forest bathing, whatever you're gonna call it, that is a real thing. We are connected to the earth. We need, we need those trees. We need to go and do that walk. I guess my fear with this is if we put a whole bunch of resources into going after the private lands, and we can't completely control what happens there, would those resources be better spent just planting more trees on the lands that we control going forward? We could always come back to number one and consider it a year or two from now. But if you were to take $100,000 and just start planting extra trees in our own city parks, which we can control, and we know they're not gonna get cut down there, would that be a better bang for the buck, so to speak? So, it's just, I love the idea of it. I'm just concerned about how we're approaching it. And is that spending that $100,000 or even more, gonna really get us where we want to be? And is it something we can control? So, kind of just some concerns I have with it. I like the idea behind it. I just want to do the things that we can control as a city and as a council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Doherty.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the mover and the seconder for the motion and the delegations that spoke earlier. I think it is really super important that we know actually what we have. We want to, we said we're committed to be leaders in climate change and action on climate change. Well, we can't really be leaders if we don't even know what's going on with our trees. So, but councillor Bohm just raised a good question. Things change constantly. So, I just wonder if we could use the dash system and our, you know, interactive kind of map system to easily update the maps all the time.
Commissioner Joyce?
Thank you. And through you. So, quick answer would be that we would look at all the resources that we have in-house to be able to, you know, to determine whether we could discern what constitutes woodland. So, we have information in dash, we have information in GIS. We would look at all of those data avenues to determine if there's ways to get the information in the most efficient manner.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So, the way the motion is written right now, it includes a map. So, we're gonna map out the woodlands, which is really important, as well as providing us strategies. But I am concerned that there's no date to this. So, when do we expect, when could we anticipate that this will come to council?
Commissioner Joyce?
Thank you. And through you. So, it's difficult for me to provide that answer. I'll be quite honest with you, without really scoping out the quality of the data that we might have available. I can tell you that, in particular with respect to private lands, it's going to be quite difficult. So, if an assessment is required on, to private lands, we don't have right of entry onto those private lands to make those assessments. So, that could become a very difficult aspect of this. On the public lands, you know, if we're having to require to actually go and inventory all of the trees in our woodlands in the urban growth boundary, we're probably speaking better part of a year for someone to do that. And then again, if we contract that work out, then it would depend on the ability of the contractor to get that work done, which I really couldn't provide an answer to that at this point in time.
Perhaps an update every now and then to council would be appreciated, so that we keep apprised of what's going on. That would be really helpful. But I also wonder, like, I remember, I recall paying money for some aerial visioning software. And I wonder if that could also be used, like some topography, like there, we have all sorts of type of systems that we don't actually need to go on public, on private property anymore. I wonder if we could speak to that.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So, the tree canopy report will provide a degree of guidance towards possibly identifying areas that could constitute being a woodland. But it would require visual inspection by a person to determine whether or not it meets that criterion.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Hill.
Thank you, your worship. And just, I got a couple of concerns about this. Some of what councillor Bohm said, I really agree with. But there's some parts of this that I think are problematic. So, my first question really goes to the mover. And number two, because I see protection as a pretty, a pretty specific kind of thing. If we, it says, provide strategies for council's consideration to protect Kingston's remaining woodlands. So, I read that as, in keeping them, like, that there's no potential there for development. And so, I just want to ask the mover, is that, is that what your intent is here, is to, when you say to protect the woodlots, that they are not to be disturbed?
Councillor Ossanik?
To, okay, not clear cut them. That's what I mean by protection. So, to leave a good buffer of the woodland. So, 2274 councillor Hill, right, leave a buffer that we had hoped to be left along the north edge.
Councillor Hill?
So, is that how, I gotta turn to staff. Now, is that how you would, would staff view protect as, as sort of the way that councillor Ossanik described? I just want to make sure we get the wording correct, because what I'm concerned about is that this, applications would come to planning committee, for example, you know, for development on a woodlot. And the argument will be, well, that woodlock is to be protected, so therefore there's no development allowed on that. I'm just wondering, how would staff interpret that?
Okay. Is there anyone from staff that wants to weigh in on that? Commissioner Agnew?
Yes, thank you through you, Mayor Patterson. I think councillor Hill, to your question, it would really depend on which corresponding land use policies that we would then put in place relative to the additional data analysis. As you would know, as a member of our planning committee, our official plan already contains a lot of information in Natural Heritage Schedules A and B, that look at different levels of woodland, and that corresponds with information that comes from the Ministry of Natural Resources. So, this would essentially be an additional ground truthing exercise. And I think relative to the impact on development, in addition to identifying where we have these woodlots, the strength comes in the actual creation of policy that would be the guiding policy relative to any development application. So, I know that's, that's a higher level answer to you councillor, but I guess the devil's in the details is what I'm trying to say, when it comes to looking at how we would translate this data and this information, this inventory, and then how that translates into a strategy that is implemented through policy change.
So, and I think that is sort of what my issue with this motion is, is that there's, there isn't really enough detail in it right now to allow staff to respond. You know, we're gonna, like, as councillor Bohm said, you know, the potential here to spend, you know, an extraordinary amount of money mapping out these woodlots, especially if we try to include private ownership, which, you know, I don't think is something we really want to do. I mean, I've certainly heard lots of arguments around the horseshoe already about our invasion of people's privacy and their property rights and all of those sorts of things. So, I'm really kind of concerned that, that this is getting into an area that, you know, is too broad, and then providing some definitions for staff that don't really clearly identify what it is that we're trying to do. And I don't disagree with councillor Ossanik and her efforts and the mover's efforts here to try to protect as much of the, as many of the trees on any development as we possibly can. I think that's laudable. But I don't think that that's gonna be achieved by this, and I think it's gonna be at considerable cost. So, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is that we turn this motion down. I certainly would, would entertain, you know, I think, something coming back to council that is a bit more precise in terms of what we're trying to do. And again, focuses on those lands that we really have control over, because it doesn't really make a lot of sense to try and prescribe something for which we are not in a position to be able to do. So, I would, I would not support this, this motion in its, in its current form. I think, though, one of the things that we really could look at doing is looking at our own lands, and, and looking at where we want to, to really focus our efforts in terms of developing permanent woodlots, woodlands within the urban boundary, that we're going to continue to sustain and ensure that there's no, there's no clear cutting in the future, and that they're not susceptible to any kind of development down the road. So, I can't support this in the fashion that it's in, but I understand the intent, and I agree with a lot of the intent. I just think it's just a little bit too fuzzy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Chappell.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to thank the mover for including me in this opportunity. Certainly, the West End has been significantly impacted by these clear cutting activities. I understand that private ownership allows for development, but there seems to be a real lack of sensitivity on the part of certain developers with regards to cutting trees. And they see, and the lack of awareness that the, you know, neighboring community has in terms of these trees being cut, creating all kinds of chaos and misunderstanding, namely Eunice Drive, the struggles on 2274 Princess Street. And so, it's raised the concerns. And it's, it's almost a mockery of being a councillor sitting around this horseshoe, declaring a climate emergency, when there is very limited effort that can happen to help retain some additional trees, to help, you know, filter the air, cool the environment, and provide homes for wildlife that our children so, so lovingly like to observe. So, I am fully gonna endorse and support this motion as it stands. If staff comes back and provides information saying it's difficult to get information on the private lands, that's fine. But the point is that we don't start somewhere and don't have a baseline data point for us to look at, we just continue to lose these piecemeal, piecemeal. So, additionally to what councillor Ossanik has stated, this year in particular, possibly because of the pent-up demand from COVID and building, it's just been an absolute massacre of our natural ecosystem within the urban boundary. And that is very concerning to many of our residents. And so, we're trying to provide a voice for them around the table.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Hutchison.
Thank you. This motion points to something that's been going on for several years regarding our environmental situation. And we know we're in a climate crisis. And I think people are interested in all of it to a certain extent, but especially on trees, because that appears to be something they can do, but we can do, and we can do locally. So, I had basically the same approach. At first, when I read this, this motion, I thought, how is that gonna work? But then, I read again, I listened to some of the commentators, and I agree with councillor Chappell, this is about baseline knowledge. We don't know this. How are we supposed to do something about it? The issue between public and private lands, I suppose you have to do estimates at some point, and as commissioner Joyce pointed out. And so, I don't know if this is perfectly done, but I don't know what that would look like. And that bothers me when, when the need is now, and, and the devastation is now, and you're not getting it back. That's the biggest problem. What's been knocked down is gone. And I've had a number of conversations with staff about what can we do to preserve as many, maximize the number of trees on our properties. And the fact is, people want to come in on unemployment lands or housing, that they gotta knock some trees down. But that's not what councillor Ossanik is talking about. What she's talking about is maximizing the number of trees. If we can, we make agreements. Now, do we have the legal basis for that? Well, that's gonna be in the report, as far as I'm concerned. What can we do, and what can we not do? And I understand what councillor Hill is saying. I mean, it's perfectly, and councillor Bohm said, perfectly legitimate questions. What I'm looking for is a report that explains all that to us, and gives us the basis for assessing what we have left. And frankly, when it's a bit loose, it allows them to do their job better sometimes, because they'll go back and they'll say, what are we gonna do with this? And they know essentially what we want. We need to know what is happening. Some of it is not good. 2274, it seemed to me, we could retain more trees than we did and still build the edifice, you know, and still get the housing. And that's true. And I've talked to councillor Hookumbos, commissioner Hookumbos. And I said, why can't they control unemployment lands, the four corners, and a buffer boundary of trees? It's not everything, and it doesn't do everything. He had good reasons why that didn't happen in a couple of major cases I could mention. I'm not gonna do now. But that doesn't mean that if we set the parameters, the criteria differently, we couldn't do it differently. So, what I'm saying is, I think we do vote for this, not because we think it's perfect. And is it gonna cost money? Well, getting baseline data is always gonna cost you money. That's, you know, and then, after you've got the baseline, you're gonna have to adjust. And that happens all the time with all kinds of things we do. I remember once, when the population projections were terrible, okay, back in 2008, and former councillor from Sydney, and myself and a couple of others managed to get it, you know, changed, how they were even doing it, the estimates. So, that happens. So, I think we need to move along. We just looked at a couple of corporate greenhouse gas reports, but the corporations in the community, which were great, because it shows that we're moving into the community in a positive way. We need to get this straight.
Thirty seconds.
Just to follow, councillor Hill, that I really was listening to you, because at planning, one time you said, we have to figure out how we're gonna balance development with environmental, including trees, issues. And I'll be, I don't know. But it's plaguing me, and this seems to me a way of getting at it, at least. It's not precise, but I don't know that at this point, we've got enough data, enough analysis to be that precise. So, I suggest we vote for this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Stroud.
Okay, so, this is great debate. This is, this is really useful, because like councillor Hill said, if it's too vague, and we're not sure what we're doing with this, we get into trouble. I was particularly concerned by what commissioner Joyce said about the Joyce said about, uh, the consultant. And I was, I was, I have an amendment ready, uh, that would, that would state that we not use a consultant, that we direct that to staff. But there's a simpler way to actually get there without even putting that in the motion, and this is actually councillor Sanic's idea, um, to amend it so that it's only the city-owned lands that are mapped out. And we can, we can always come back with another motion to look at private lands, woodlots on, or woodlands and private lands. We can do another motion for that if we want that information. The important thing is to know, uh, about the woodlands that are under city control. So this is, it goes back to something councillor Bohm said as well. And by the way, I did get a tick going for a walk in a, uh, in a forest right beside a strip mall with my daughter last week. And, uh, she had said, Daddy, there's a forest right there. Why don't we go there? And she had no interest in the stores. She wanted to go into this forest, which was right behind the strip mall. And, uh, I, I got a tick, and that was right in the city. So, uh, Lyme disease is real. But anyways, uh, the amendment, it would be very simple. It would, it would basically delete the second sentence of the first clause and replace it with, uh, city-owned woodlands only. But I, I need to write it out, so I'll need a short recess.
So, so councillor Stroud, so I, I do see your amendment. I, I would say, under the circumstances, because your, your amendment is only deleting words and not adding them, that I, I think that if I'm getting nods from council, that everyone understands what this amendment is doing. So, so I have an amendment moved by councillor Stroud. Is there, is there a second, seconded by councillor Bohm, that would delete from, uh, the first paragraph of the resolved clause and which are held in private ownership, if I understand correctly? Is that right?
That's fine. Yeah, that, I mean, that, that has the same, that's the easiest way to do it, yeah.
So then it would read, if the amendment passes, it would read, map out the existing woodlands within the urban boundary, identifying which woodlands are owned by the city.
Yeah.
Okay. Would anyone like, uh, that up on the screen so that we understand that? Is everyone okay with that? Okay. So, so given the fact that everyone understands what this amendment is, councillor Stroud, uh, you have the floor. Uh, if there's anything you want to say to the amendment, and then we'll open it up to...
Yeah, I think I've already covered it by saying that you can separate, this is the most controversial aspect of the motion, and it is vaguely worded, which, uh, we'd get a report back from staff that would, would start the conversation and we'd have more information. But the most important thing is to get a handle on what lands are city-owned that might be up for development, and we could look at what conditions we might put on those lands, uh, while they're in our hands. Because with property rights, we can do that. Um, I don't think there's any point in, in, uh, starting a fight about the private lands, which we also need to know about, but it, that's a separate issue that maybe the point of the amendment is really to separate those two things. This, uh, and so to the amendment, it's really focusing on, um, I, I would like, maybe before we vote on the amendment, to go back to commissioner Joyce, is if we remove the requirement to look at private woodlands, does staff have the resources to give a preliminary rough mapping of the, um, of the first part of that clause for the city-owned lands?
Commissioner Joyce?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, I would say that that is something that we could, uh, possibly do. Uh, again, I think we would look at what data we have and, and try to meet what obviously the intent here of this motion would be. Um, so I would say that's much more doable than, uh, the issue of, uh, private lands.
So I guess I'll, uh, ask a follow-up question because there was concern about consultant fees. Would, uh, would staff come back to us if a consultant was required for, to comply with the directive in this motion?
Thank you. And through you, uh, the answer would be yes. If I feel that it's going to require a significant amount of money, uh, beyond what we have, um, capacity for, then I would come back to council for direction.
Excellent. Well, in that, with those, I would say that I have nothing more to say about the amendment. It's just the, uh, the, the public lands that I'd be concerned about, and that's what the amendment does. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, next is councillor Bohm. So on the amendment only, please. Councillor.
Thank you, Bishop. And through you, I, I think this is a, a great amendment, and it makes this manageable, uh, as councillor Stroud pointed out, uh, more in-house. Ultimately, I think the entire thing was good. It was just trying to do too much. This amendment keeps it kind of within a manageable chunk. It'll give us good information, to councillor Hutchison's point, and councillor Chappell's as well. We, we do need a good baseline. And I just feel like, sort of what we were trying to do with, with everything here was almost amend our tree bylaw without actually mentioning our tree bylaw. So I, I think in a sense it was, it was too big, uh, too big a task within, within what's proposed here. So I am gonna fully support the amendment. I look forward to getting that information back. And as councillor Stroud pointed out, once we have that, we can look at strategies to increase the canopy there and the forest there, and then we can come back to the private side. But I think that needs to be managed in a different way. So, thank you.
Next is councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And through you, I'm actually not gonna support the amendment because I feel like it neuters the effectiveness of the motion too much. And to set that up, I'm hoping I could ask Ms. Agnew, of all the files that we see on planning committee, what's the ratio of lands that are publicly owned versus privately owned? One to 10 perhaps? One to nine? Like, at least 90% of what we deal with is a, an issue of private ownership? Is that fair?
Commissioner Agnew?
Uh, thank you. And through you, yes, certainly I wouldn't have any mathematical data to back that up. But typically speaking, all of the applications, for the most part, that come through are facilitated on private lands. Sometimes there may be municipal partnership, but for the most part, you see a large majority on private lands.
All right, thanks. Because I'm interested in passing the motion as it was without the amendment to understand the trade-offs of what protection might mean. And as the councillor set it up, it's not anti-development, um, in any way, but taking out the private piece essentially removes the planning discussion from it, which is why I was interested in seeing it passed. So I won't vote for the amendment.
Okay. Uh, next is councillor Sanic.
Thank you. Um, okay, so as far as the mapping goes, I never meant this to be a big exercise. Like, honestly, I could provide the map. I just need the city. No, I'm serious. I'm serious. Like, I was totally shocked and almost like thrown over my chair by the cost of having to hire consultants and pay $100,000. I just want a Google map and areas circled. Seriously, just areas circled of what woodlands the city owns. So for, for instance, in councillor Doherty's district, right, we have a woodland apparently behind Ongunada. We have a woodland on the, I guess that's the other side from Moet. We have a woodland on, um, is it Fairhill, like next to the golf course? Is that owned by the city? We have a woodland on Collins Bay Road, like off of Ridgewood Estates. Is that owned by the city? I, seriously? I just wanted a map with circle, 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 circle. Now we will get that because of the amendment, um, that councillor Stroud has. And now we can assume every other woodland that we see on a Google aerial map that is not circled means it's in private ownership. And that's perfect. That's all I wanted. I did not want to list up, this little area is owned by so-and-so, and this little area is also owned by another private person. I never wanted that. I just wanted to know, like, an overview map of circle, circle, circle. These are the woodlands owned by the city, and that means we can assume everything else is private. But for part B, the protection, we heard the delegations that Brampton's doing things, right, Hamilton's doing things. I know that Ottawa is doing things to protect contributory woodlands, and we're not. Because all these woodlands, these 20 woodlands that are, disappeared, like eight of them have just disappeared in the last few months, and we have 12 more that have already been approved to disappear. They're all in private ownership. And we need to know what strategies we can use, not through you, commissioner Joyce, because you're public works, but who we saw up here, commissioner Agnew and Tim Park, our director of planning, they have to bring us the strategies. If they bring it to us in camera, no problem, right? I kept it nice and open, just saying strategies because we might, like, the details might have to be in camera. But other cities are able to save these woodlands, chunks of the woodland, and why can't we? That's all I'm asking with this motion. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to the amendment only? Councillor Hutchison, to the amendment only, please.
Um, well, after that cogent, impassioned plea, um, I had some difficulties with the, with, with, with the amendment. But if you think it works, that's one thing in its favor. But the, do you think that, um, that just knowing about the public grounds, you believe that was, is what we need and then that's enough? Or is it more like councillor Bohm said, okay, let's find out about the public and then we'll worry about the private? Because I can't see them being divorced from each other. Presumed the, the city is not gonna be knocking down trees left, right, and center. So that's, that's part of it. So I guess my question to, to, um, commissioner Joyce is, if it's only the public and it's only circles on a map, on a Google map, how long do you think it'll take to do that?
Commissioner Joyce?
Thank you. And through you, so I'm hoping that is something that we can do fairly quickly. I'm really hoping that we have the data, uh, in our system, whether it's the GIS dash whatever, in our systems, that we can capture the kind of data that, that council's looking for. So I'm hopeful, but I don't know. I don't have the answer right at this time. But I'm hopeful that is something that we can come up with quite, quite quickly for it.
Quickly? Do you mean like two, three months or?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, so I think we should support this amendment so we can get on with this, get it moving. And it's gonna, it's gonna come back, whether it comes back to this council or not. It's, not the report's gonna come back for sure, but the issue is not going away that much, I think I can guarantee. So I say, if councillor Sanic's fine with this and that description of what she was looking for, then good. I, I think that might work. So I'll support the amendment by councillor Stroud, which I, I really did appreciate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if there's nobody else who wishes to speak to the amendment, we will call the vote on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries by a vote of 11, 10 to 2. Councillor Neil and councillor Kylie opposed. So now we are back to the motion as amended. Councillor Stroud, you still have a minute 30 on the clock to speak to now the motion as amended.
Yeah, okay. So going back to what the delegation, uh, Ms. Hassan, uh, said to us especially, um, there's a lack of awareness, right? I think we can all agree on that. But not, not, it's not universal lack of awareness because we have dozens of delegations coming to us at committee and, and at council and at planning to talk about the importance of, of our green friends. So, um, so I think, uh, you know, councillor Hutchison said it very well, saying this isn't going away. I think this is a great starting point. I think the most important thing about this motion is that it raises awareness. Um, I, I've been saying for years that, uh, trees are very cheap to maintain. They cost almost nothing to maintain. Once they're healthy, they, they take care of themselves, as, as long as you don't kill them. And, and unfortunately, that's what a clear cut does, right? It, it kills these perfectly functional benign creatures for no reason other than mostly lack of awareness is the reason. So, um, I think in the long run, we're gonna need to monetize these trees somehow on private lands, monetize them as in, give them a real municipal value so that the developers pay attention to them. Because then if you give them monetary value, then they, all of a sudden, they have, uh, status with these private owners. But if you can cut them down for free and you don't understand their value, they're gonna get cut down. And that's where we're at right now in history. We're, uh, you know, following in our European forbears footsteps of deforesting the planet, you know, for nice lawns and gardens and things like that, thinking that we're doing the same thing, but it's not. A woodland is a complex ecosystem, even in a city. Uh, the Moet Woods is a great example on Moet Avenue. It's been there my whole life, and there are creatures living in those woods, right in the middle of a subdivision. So, and lots and lots of birds. So, um, and, and the trees are, are hundreds of feet high. So, uh, we need to, we need, like councillor Sanic said, be able to point to them and say, there's a woodland here, there's a woodland there, there's a woodland there. And we need to, uh, first notice them, and then we need to value them, and then we need to put money value on them, even for the private sector, so that they get protected by their own owners. That's where we need to get. I think we can get there. In the end, everybody wins. We save each of those big trees is worth thousands and thousands of dollars. Everybody wins. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Next is councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I think there have been a lot of articulate comments about the information and how that could be valuable for us, so I'm happy to support it on that front. Also, I think it's important that we recognize there's nothing binding in the second clause on protection. It talks about consideration, and for that reason alone, I'm happy to support it, especially because I think we need to get real about what the trade-offs are. If we're going to protect these woodlots, does it mean we have to expand their urban growth boundary? I mean, my argument has been for a long time, that would be no. That is a, a suitable trade-off, losing some urban trees for not pushing further out, increasing sprawl, paying more on servicing, pushing cars further in their commute and so forth. But I think the motion allows us to have that consideration more fully, and it's a great motion for that reason, so I'm happy to support it. I wish we had private, but now we don't. I'll support it anyway. Thank you.
Okay. We will, uh, councillor Sanic, you have the last word.
Thank you. So just to reiterate with this second clause, provide strategies for council's consideration to protect Kingston's remaining woodlands within the urban boundary. That is, looking for the strategies that Ottawa's doing, Brampton's doing, Hamilton, other cities, to protect woodlands that could be on private land or public land. That then gets into, you know, what councillor Neil and councillor Kylie wants. That is what Ottawa is doing. They are not giving away the contributory woodlands every single time, or the entire contributory woodland. They're looking at the Natural Heritage Reference Manual, like they're looking at strategies. And that is what I hope Kingston can contact Ottawa and find out how they're doing it. So obviously, our city woodlands, unless council actually votes to clearcut one of our city-owned woodlands, like Moet Avenue, you know, or Moet Woods, uh, we would not do that, right? We're not, we are not gonna vote to clearcut Bell Park. We're not gonna vote to clearcut Lemoine Point. But what strategies for the woodlands that are out there that are not city-owned, you know, can staff bring back that other cities are doing that can work for Kingston? Let's call, contact Ottawa, Brampton. That's for our planning staff to do because those are planning matters. They, they got the knowledge for that. I don't. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll call the vote on new motion number one as amended. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to new motion number two, uh, moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by mayor Patterson. Whereas the planning committee is one of the City of Kingston statutory committees that meets the first and through Thursday of the month, September through June, and once a month in July and August at 6:00 PM. Whereas the planning committee involves lengthy, complex, and technical provincial regulations and municipal processes across a variety of bylaws, legislation, and other institutions such as the Ontario Land Tribunal. Whereas planning committee meetings regularly have a duration of approximately five hours, extending near to or beyond midnight. And whereas research suggests shorter meetings with regular bio breaks make for more efficient and effective performance, whereas the current nature of the meetings may limit the potential of public engagement and councillor and staff's ability to function at their best in terms of decision-making, vital for carrying out their required duties. Therefore, be resolved that staff report to council by the end of Q3 on the possibilities of reworking the schedule, meeting time, procedures, and duration of planning committee, drawing on best practices from the organizational literature, bylaws of comparable Ontario municipalities, and public engagement on the issues to optimize the functionality of the meetings. Councillor Kylie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I'll be brief to start and happily respond at length later on if council colleagues have any objections. Um, but the key thing here is in the last line of the resolved clause, which is to optimize the functionality of the meetings in the interest of every party participating. So this is looking at the public, the staff, the proponents, and committee members, seeing how we can, I would say, make better decisions and do it in perhaps a more efficient way by rethinking how we're doing it. Because, at least in my view, and I'll... Because, at least in my view, and I'll project my issues with it, I know that I'm thinking not as clearly as I should at 1:00 in the morning on the technical details of expanding a quarry. So to all those who have been doing that for years and years and years, thank you, especially members of the public who put up with that, to be frank. And I'm hoping this can just be a report for us to consider how to make things a bit better. And that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Chappell?
To your worship, to the mover, my question is, do you envision perhaps that meetings might be held during regular business hours, or maybe on Saturdays when the public can really be engaged? Are those things you're looking at? Or perhaps additional compensation for members of the planning committee?
Well, it's not a motion through you, Mayor Patterson, a motion of reconsideration on something we just voted against, so I don't think it can be that last option, councillor. But definitely, I think, all options around duration, schedule, and so forth are open. And comparable Ontario municipalities might have solutions, and that's why I referenced them specifically. I know some bigger cities in Ontario do meet during the day, and at other times that make for not midnight meetings, so let's see what comes back and then decide how to proceed from there.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we'll call the vote then on new motion number two. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay. We have no other new motions. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Deputy Clercoss for minutes, please.
Moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor Ossanik, that the minutes of city council meeting number 10-2022, held Tuesday, April 19th, 2022, be confirmed.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. And we have some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Deputy Clercoss for bylaws, please.
Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Hutcheson, that bylaws 1 through 4 be given their first and second reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Hutcheson, that clause 12.63 of bylaw number 2021-41 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw 1 three readings.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Hutcheson, that bylaws 1 through 4 be given their third reading.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Doherty. All those in favor? And we're adjourned. Thanks very much.